Pinawag ko na Senator Sani Angara. Senator Angara, you have 10 minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon po sa inyo, sa lahat ng ating mga kasamahan at sa lahat ng ating resource persons at bisita. I also appreciate the discussion of the resource persons brought by Senator Pia regarding futures. And I think tama 'yung ano eh, a lot of our colleagues have dwelt on the current problems going into very minute details. Pero 'yung, as I said earlier, hindi naman lumata 'yung problema natin. We've always had problems with trade and how to protect our producers while at the same time safeguarding the interest of our consumers, as mentioned by Secretary Chu of NEDA. But at the same time, we have our producers and a local industry. So, ang tanong, Mr. President, is ba't nagagawa po ng ibang bansa na tulungan po ang kanilang mga producers? Like, I was looking at the countries who we import pork from, no? And there are many small countries there. You're talking about Denmark, Netherlands, Belgium. Eh, mas malit ang bansa po ito sa atin. Mas malitang terit ang arable land po nila. And yet, they're able to somehow make their agriculture progressive. And I understand a big part of making the hog industry or the livestock industry competitive or progressive, Mr. President, is investment in feeds, no? And that's about 60% of the costs. So what have we done? Can I ask our, we have with us our former DA secretary? It's a shame Secretary Dar is already left, but he has his USEEX here. So, I'll address it to the experts in our body, Mr. President. What have we done to build up these industries long term, Mr. President? Diba? So, let's say there are shortcomings. We're always looking, kumbaga, looking around the corner, but we seem to be missing the forest for the trees, Mr. President. So, ano ba talagang ginagawa natin para lumakas ng husto 'yung ating industriya? Para panahon po ng pandemya at gumitit po ang kalakal sa buong mundo? Ano pong magagawa po natin, Mr. President?
Yusek Sumbilla, would you like to reply? Of NEDA. Yusek Sumbilla was left by Secretary Chu. Yusek Mercedita Sumbilla. She's still online? Due to low bandwidth, local computer conditions? Ganun ba kahirap ang NEDA?
Mr. President, may I respond to the points raised by Senator Angara?
Senator, government opinion, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Sani, good afternoon. Good afternoon po our resource persons. Actually, tama po kayo. Kung feed formulation ang pag-uusapan natin, isa lang ang kritikal na material na hindi natin napupuro sa Pilipinas. That's soy meal, no? Sapagkat meron nga tayong soybean sa Mindanao, it's not as cost efficient sa production kaysa sa soya ng America. So basically, lahat ng daya na din sa atin, corn, copra meal, fish meal. Ang problema lang natin in the past was that this was not integrated actually, which we are trying to do now in Mindanao. Nag-organize na po kami ng Mindanao Corn Clusters. We have started the Mindanao Corn Industry Development Program with the help of the European Union. We're putting up corn silos in at least initially five major corn production areas of Mindanao. Dito po, i-gather natin lahat ng production ng maize in one area. And we are engaging CCP Foods of Thailand to put up hog breeder farms near these areas para 'yung kuwan lang feed material requirements would be available. So ito po 'yung isa sa mga innovations na ginagawa natin ngayon. Mindanao could actually play a very important role in the food supply of the country. Ang kailangan lang po natin is really to focus on these areas. Corn production, sorghum production. And in fact, I'm proud to tell you, Mr. Sen President, that hopefully before the end of the year, ay maumpisahan na po namin 'yung production ng Bangsa Moro Halal Beef with the help of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region Muslim Mindanao. And we are being supported by the Australian Government and the European Union. So yun po ang nangyayari ngayon sa Mindanao. Pwede po tayo mag-develop na sarili nating feeds. Meron tayong fish meal, may copra meal. In fact, we are already looking into the use of seaweeds as feed additives for our feeds in Mindanao. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that answer. Go ahead, go ahead. Please, answer, your honors.
Mr. President, Honorable Senators, isang may klingisagot lang, Senator Angara. Ang pagkukulang po ng gobyerno, especially ang DA, Department of Agriculture, hindi po in-implement 'yung law na in-otor na father niyo, 'yung Afma law 24 years ago. It is supposed to protect us farmers and develop the local industry. Eh, nag-liberalize tayo without implementing the Afma law. Kaya ganito po ang estado ng ating agrikultura sa bansang ito. Sinusabay bayan ko po itong pagdenigito mula noon lunes. Kasi po nangangamba kami, nasusunod na ang broiler sector sa ginawa ng gobyerno sa hog sector. Despite oral pleas with the Department of Agriculture, kaya kay Secretary Dar last year pa, na tinulungan niya kami ni Senator Bilyar. At nung mag-lockdown, sabi namin, kung pwede temporarily stop chicken importation, kasi ang primary market nito ay 'yung mga SRI. 35% of the produce of chicken goes to the SRI. Nasarap po lahat 'yan. Eh, napakarami nung aming inventory nung panahon na 'yun ng chicken inventory, overflowing among all storages. On June 15, may face-to-face meeting kami with Secretary Dar. Inulit namin, sabi namin, sir, pagkahindi niyo po, tinigil pa samantala importasyon, aatras po ang local production. At nangyari po, pero ang hindi po namin inakala, pati 'yung malalaking kompanya, umatras na rin dahil sa lugi. So, para doon sa pag-uusap po naman natin, hindi masyadong nakapokus, although ineemphasize din naman ni Senator Bilyar. Ang pinag-uusapan po kasi 'yung supply. Ba't the supply is dependent on the demand? Kahit po kukonti 'yung supply niyo, kung mas kukonti 'yung demand, surplus pa rin 'yan. Eh, 'yung sinasabi na, kaya ako po nagdete-secretary Secretary Chuwa, na 15 kilos pa rin per capita consumption, eh, sa manok po 30% lang nawala doon sa total industry. Hindi po namin ibig sabihin, pero despite that fact, namin nabuhasan ng 30%, hindi namin mabatas ang presyo. Kasi napakahina po ng demand. Because of the lockdowns, takot na mga tao lumabas. Ang hina po, kaya nga, sa projection nila, sa sabihin nila, ang kailangan daw natin for this year ay 1.6 million metric tons ng baboy. Eh, panaginip po 'yan. Hindi po makukonsum ng mga Pilipino 'yan. Dahil wala ng unang-una nga, takot sa COVID. At ang pangalwa po, masaklab na katotohanan, wala na pong pera ang tao. Last year, kaya po medyo nag-survive kami, kahit na lugi kami na malaki. Last year, on the onset po nung COVID, 'yung mga local government so namili sa amin ang pangayuda sa mga industry. Kaya, kahit paano nakatulong, eh, ngayon po, bukod sa wala ng pera ang tao, pati po local government, ah, walang pera. Kaya 'yan po ang inano, ah, isa pa po da, bilang chairman po ako ng Philippine Egg Board, ang perfect model po para sa self-sufficiency ay 'yung egg industry. Dahil po walang imported, ayos self-sufficient sa egg log. In fact, ngayon po nung taon na ito, natatakot kami mag-o-over-supply. Kasi po 'yun, na lugi sa manok, na lugi sa baboy, pumunta sa layer, ang katuwiran po nila, dito tayo kasi ito walang imported. Wala tayong kalaban na imported. Yun po ang sitosyon. Kaya mahirap po talaga na mag-survive. Para po naman kay Senator, eh, ito na lang po kay Senator Pangilinan. 'Yung mga importers po 'yan, eh, demand-driven 'yan. 'Yung sinasabi nila, natatakot talang ano, with the present tariff po, itong first quarter po nung taon na ito, ang importasyon ng baboy ito mas by 150% nung first quarter of 2021 against 2020. At nung sa meat po, tinas po nung meat, kasi dito po sa 150%, lahat po 'yan kasama opal. Pero 'yung meat pa lang, ay tinas po 260% nung first quarter. So, bakit pa natin ba pabaan 'yung ating tariff? Eh, ipipapasok nga eh. Market-driven po 'yan eh. If there is some market, lata din po 'yung supply na 'yan. Kaya nga, ang ako po, ang masasabi ko po lang talaga, dapat talagang mahimay natin 'yung demand. Ano ba 'yung nakikita natin, demand, tataas ba 'yan? Eh, based on the economic projections, hindi po makakabawi ang ekonomiya ng mga Pilipinas etong taon na ito. Kaya, the supply will remain low. Yun lang po muna ang feed, baka ang akin hinpo sa. Marami salamat po, Mr. President and Senator Angara.
Yusek Sumbilla ready?
Mr. Chairman, on the part of DA, can we also respond?
Alright, with the absence of NEDA, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Undersecretary Medrano. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Sen Sani. Yeah, your question is most welcome. And I think this is a very relevant question that should pose to all of us as a country. It all boils down to how competitive our local industries compared to other countries. And it all boils down on our investment to develop our local industries, both from government and even from the private sector. If we compare our agriculture investment compared to Thailand, I think we are way below. So, I think if we can increase our investment to support our local industries, then we can easily become competitive.
Mr. President, Yusek Medrano, sorry to interrupt, no? Pero, I was hoping for a more specific answer. How much does Thailand spend for their hog industry or their feeds industry, please?
Well, I don't have the specific, uh, level of investment, Mr. Chair, but according to information, their budget is so much.
Yes, yes, that's yun nga eh. We have to break it down, Yusek, Mr. President. Hindi na tayo pwedeng sa generalization lang na kulang ang budget po natin. Alam na po natin yun eh. And that's why we must, kung kulang nga ang budget, dapat mas intelligente or mas discriminating 'yung investments po natin, Mr. President. Because we only have, yun lang eh, 10 pesos na lang ang loob ng pitaka mo eh. So, saan mo gagastos 'yung huling 10 pesos mo, diba? Kailangan, pag-isipan natin ang mabuti. Is it a good investment? For instance, Mr. President, ilalagay po sa freezers? So you can import some more imported pork? I don't think that's a good investment of your money, Mr. President. That's why, kung wala naman 'yung data sa atin at hindi natin paragal focus sa ngayon 'yung pagpapalakas o pagpapasigla ng ating lokal na industriya, can I just ask the NEDA and the DA to really put this at the top of their agenda to build a robust industry? Because we will never achieve food security if we are dependent on foreign producers. So, talagang kailangan, long term po 'yung outlook natin. Hingi na lang po natin sa sulat, kasi mukhang ang sasagutin sa atin dito, kulang tayo sa pera. Alam po natin yun eh, kung kulang talaga tayo sa pera, saan natin ilalaga 'yung perang, kakaunting pera na naiiwan po sa atin? Yun na lang po, Mr. President. Rather than have very general answers that we've been hearing every year during our budget hearings and during the sporadic investigations.
Mr. President, I just want to make a comment to the question of Senator Angara. This is Senator Bilyar. I just want to tell Senator Angara my experience in Thailand. I went to a farm in Thailand. It's actually a tourist farm of cows making dairy. You know, it's so funny, nakakulong 'yung mga cow sa farm. Tapos, sa likod ng kanilang farm, 400 hectares, meron silang taniman ng mga grass, na APR yun eh, diba? Tapos, dun ang gagaling 'yung pinakakain nila doon sa mga nakakulong na cow. Ibig sabihin, kaya nga, I have a farm school. I'm building something like that. Titignan ko kung kayang gawin sa Pilipinas. Kasi, I find it na napakaganda na ikaw na nag-aalaga ng hog, eh, ikaw na rin na magtatanim ng kakainin nung hog. Tapos, kakatin mo lang, tapos dadalhin mo doon sa hog. Hindi kailangan ng malaking grazing land or something like that. Parang pipiliin mo 'yung mga nutritious na halaman, itatanim mo, tapos 'yung naipoprobide mong pagkain para sa iyong mga alagang animal. So, nakita ko 'yun sa Thailand at tsaka sa Israel eh. So, I was hoping that we can do it and teach it to the poor farmers of the Philippines na ganun lang ang gawin, para hindi nabibili ng pagkain and at the same time, mapapalaki 'yung mga animal. So, I'm doing that. And if I'm successful, maybe I can share it to the poor farmers of the Philippines.
Thank you, thank you to our agriculture chair and champion, Senator Cynthia. Mr. President, siguro tanong natin sa DA, do they have any program similar to that? To encourage farmers to, you know, something like that to... Like, for example, we have 2.4 billion na budget in 2021 to combat ASF. Nagastos na ba yun? O, anong plano po doon?
Mr. Chair, Sen Sani?
Yusek Medrano, go ahead.
Yes, again, let me expound on the financial resources that we have. I can speak in behalf of the livestock sector of our country. The livestock sector is contributing about 30% of the total agricultural growth. But every year, we are just receiving about 3% to 4% of the total agriculture budget. So, when we talk of parity, Mr. Chair, I think we need more investment to develop our local industries, for poultry and livestock industries, so that we can also compete with our neighboring countries. Napakalit po 'yung investment natin sa livestock. It's only 3% to 4%. And priorities, I think, we have to also support the corn industry. Medyo mababa po 'yung yield pa natin at saka mataas 'yung ating cost of production. And we need, we have to also modernize and mechanize the way we produce corn so that we can lower the cost of production and the price of our corn can be competitive with what we are importing.
May I make a comment on that, Sen President and Sani?
Go ahead, go ahead, ma'am.
I know their budget. You know, you have a national corn program. Naghearing kami diyan sa corn. Eh, paano 'yung ginagawa niyo eh? Kaya nga, nagtatawanan kami ni Senator Aimy. Gumagawa kayo nung, nung, ano tawag niyan? Corn farm na 50 million ang isa, parang ano, sample ng corn farm. Eh, sabi nila, Senator Aimy, eh, hindi kailangan 'yung corn farm na parang ano, sample. Kailangan ipamigay niyo na doon sa mga corn farmer 'yung ginagastan 'yung 50 million per corn farm. Parang mali ang pinagdadalhan ng pera. Eh, may national corn program kayo, sasabihin niyo, maliit. Eh, ba't hindi niyo sabihin sa Secretary of Agriculture na lakihan 'yung budget niyo? Eh, kayo naman ang gumagawa ng budget niyo. Katulad namin, nilagay natin salot 10 billion para sa rice farmer, 'yung tinatawag na rice competitiveness enhancement fund. Dateng 7 billion yun, na rational rice program, ginawa niyong 15 billion. Oh, may nakita ba kayo na binigay na nanggaling doon sa 15 billion na yun? Kundi puro fertilizer na nawawala at ano? Oh, tapos eh, ano, tawag nila doon, 'yung seed na, hybrid seed na pagkamahal-mahal. Ang nakikita ko lang palagi, 'yung idinidistribute na inbred seed ng fill rice at tsaka 'yung machine ng fillmech galing sa RCEP. Parang, parang palagi niyo sinasabi, wala kayong pera. Pero saan niyo ba dinadala 'yung pera niyo? Kasi, ako, nung una akong dumating sa agriculture, 60% of your money you spend for overhead. And, ah, ano tawag dito? Ah, 'yung employees, oo. Ah, ano tawag doon, 'yung sweldo at tsaka overhead. 60% of the budget of DA, doon dinadala. Oh, tapos sasabihin niyo, wala kayong empleyado. Sabi nung, nung nagche-check sa customs, na wala daw silang empleyado. Yun daw ang problema nila, eh, 60% nga ng budget niyo sa empleyado at tsaka sa overhead. Eh, wala naman kayong pinamimigay sa farmer, 'yung 40% nawawala pa. Kaya ibig sabihin, you know, 'yung money, tama si Senator Angara. We have limited money, but we have to spend it well para may marating 'yung pera natin. Hindi tayo pwede na, palagi na lang natin ire-reklamo 'yung pera, nadagdagan ang budget. But where do you bring the money? Diba?
With the permission of Senator Angara, Senator LaSalle?
Yes, Mr. President, naalala ko tuloy. Yes, naalala ko tuloy, Mr. President. Two years ago, budget deliberation tayo ng DA. And at the time, I brought up the issue about, kasi mechanization ang usapan, naalala ko sa sinabi ni Yusek Medrano. And may mga shredder machines, ano, 'yung rice shredder machines na dinistribute on DA. Nagreklamo 'yung mga farmers, isang gamit lang, sira na. And naalala ko tuloy, na nga ako sa akin si Secretary Dar na iibisigan niya at magti-feedback. That was April of 2018, I think, or 2019. Hanggang ngayon, wala siyang feedback. Naalala ko tuloy, Yusek Medrano, pakireman niyo nga si Secretary Dar, 'yung pangako niya sa akin na isasabit niya 'yung result of his investigation. And this was two years ago, two budget years ago. Kasi kayo nagbanggit na mechanization, naalala ko tuloy 'yung pangako niya. Eh, paano nga sabi nga ni Senator Angara? Kulang na nga 'yung budget, bibili pa kayo ng defective na shredder, bibigay niyo sa mga farmers na hindi rin magamit. So, ang ginawa ng mga farmers, ni remedyuhan, sila na nagkumpune. Ang sabi, isasauli doon sa supplier. Ba't hindi naman nangyari? So, may korapsyon na naman 'yan. Ako, I'm particular about, you know, issues of korapsyon. Kasi ito rin 'yung pumapatay ni sa departamento, diba? Sa mga pangangaila ng mga magsasaka, sa mga hog grazers. Kanina, diba, it was presented by Undersecretary Blang that there are so many issues of korapsyon attendant to whatever activities 'yung ina-undertake ng department. So, we have to engage in house cleaning muna bago tayo mag-iisip ng mga plano. Ang tanong nga kanina, meron ba kayong plano? Naipuloko ko, Sen President, ang plano niyo lagi, mag-import eh. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. President? Mr. President?
Mr. President?
Mr. Sumbilla, I think? I'm here already.
Yeah, can I be heard now, sir? Sorry. Yeah, yeah, I'm just to answer the query of si Honorable Senator kanina. Yes, NEDA is really very, you know, very, very much into modernizing the agriculture sector. In fact, what we really see, the big problem of agriculture is really to improve its productivity. Yun po talaga ang kailangan natin. And all the research and development, new technologies, are really the measures that we really need, you know, to really, you know, make this happen. Kasi po talaga, if you look at, if you compare the Philippines with other Asian countries, talagang napakababa po ang ating yield levels, productivity levels as compared to our neighboring countries. So, but there are really opportunities by which we can really do that. And we really welcome 'yung contributions po and the support of our research institutions, our universities, our colleges. And I was very pleased, was very pleased to hear that many of these things that are now being done respond really to the issues that they really need to respond to, to help really the sector increase, Mr. President. If you look at our Philippine Development Plan, we are now going into innovation, we are now going into research development. And I think we really have to do that, no? Not only the sector itself, but also the whole chain. Kasi kailangan po natin na masuportahan itong paglobo ng ating production, ng marketing din. So, talagang kailangan po, it's the whole system that really needs to be improved and to really develop and modernize, Mr. Chair. So, NEDA is all for it. And that's very much, very clear in our Philippine Development Plan and in all the development plans that, you know, that we have been formulating. Thank you, sir. Sorry again, kanina.
Mr. President, can I react already? Mr. President, thank you, thank you to all those who responded. But the only one who really responded in detail was former Secretary Pinyol, no? Everybody just responded in terms of generalities and saying more investment, the usual, the usual fallback answers, no? I think it requires greater analysis, Mr. President. Sinabi ni Secretary Pinyol, be-integrated 'yung process. And then, I appreciate that. And there's an effort at least in Mindanao, siguro with the help of Mindanao Development Corporation, which he heads, to create the feed mills, no? So, there is scale, they're trying to achieve a sense of scale, Mr. President. And sana ma-replicate 'yan ng DA and with the help of NEDA. But those are big investments. You're talking about probably hundreds of millions. Sa other big land areas, like in central Luzon, northern Luzon, places like Isabela and maybe in Regions Eight and Negros, where we have big farms, no? And tama po naman yun, pero can we have more specifics? Can we ask NEDA and the DA to really? I'm not asking for it immediately, no, Mr. President. Pero, talagang tutukan naman natin 'yung problema, diba? Parang, kung gusto natin mag-import, sige, import tayo dahil gusto natin magmura 'yung preso. Pero, let's do something meaningful. Let's leave a legacy in a sense na meron tayong iniwan para sa ating mga producers, diba? Kasi, agricultural modernization, panahon pa ng tatay ko yun eh, pinag-uusapan na, diba? 1990 pa, 'yung agricultural modernization, how to modernize agriculture. And now, we're saying we have to do those things. Eh, matag 20 years na po natin sinasabi 'yan. So, I think, I'd like to hear from NEDA, what they have specifically in the, I know they're doing the development plan and under the Create Bill, which Senator Kayatano sponsored, they're also going to give incentive. So, we must incentivize these investments somehow. Kung alam natin kulang po ang ating pondok sa gobyerno to create all of these public investments, then by all means, let's incentivize the private sector so that they can come in to put in these investments. Kung kailangan may some sort, some sort of PPP, put tayo dyan. I'd like to leave this issue. Again, one last question to Yusek Medrano, Mr. President, is meron siyang binigay na datos na livestock is 30% of agriculture, but our investment is only 3% to 4%. My question, Mr. President, for the DA and Yusek Medrano is, 'yung livestock na 30%, magkano ang hog industry? What percent of that 30% is the hog industry? And dun sa 3% to 4% na investment po ng ating gobyerno, magkano ang napupunta sa hog industry? Could we get a breakdown, please, Mr. President?
Yeah, can I, can I, Yusek Medrano?
Yeah, of the total, of the total contribution of livestock and poultry to agricultural growth, the swine industry is contributing to 80% of the livestock industry. Of the 30%, 17% comes from the swine industry and 13% from poultry, approximately, Mr. President.
Could you state that again for the record? Because you stated some different numbers. Could you state the numbers, your honor, please, again, para klaro ho?
Mr. President, just two cents worth, ano? Do sa modernization ng agriculture?
Ang contribution po ng livestock ay...
17.
17% and poultry ay around 13%. That's of the current prices, Mr. Chair. Livestock actually is...
Based on prices, okay.
Ah, poultry is 18.7%.
And how is the investment distributed among livestock and poultry, your honor? We can just ask for the submission, Mr. President? Kung paredi tayo tumagal, Mr. President?
Can we submit the details?
Yes, yes, in addition, Mr. President, we'd like to have peso values for that percentage that you are giving, peso equivalents. As well as for the investment of 3% to 4%, which your honor says is inadequate, we'd like to know specifically what programs that went to. Kung inadequate na nga, tapos hindi pa nakafocus sa tamang mga layunin, eh, talagang mahihirapan po ang bansa, Mr. President. So, I'll just ask, I'll just request that, may I finish, Senator Bilyar?
Yeah, yeah. I just want to comment on...
I just want to comment on the budget.
Yeah, I'll just finish my request para I'll turn it over to you, ma'am.
Okay, no, 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 I just want to comment, kasi...
Yes, yes, I'd like to finish so I don't lose my train of...
Okay, sige, sige.
Yes, thank you. Uh, yes, on the three to four percent, can we know where the investments are going? And what's the peso equivalent of that, Mr. President? And I think NEDA really has to do an honest-to-goodness evaluation, no? Uh, of where these investments are going? Or is it going to help the right people who need it, et cetera? So yun lang po, and I think Senator Villar wants to make that interpolation, then I'll finish.
No, 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 I just want to make a comment on the budget, Senator Angara. Because this livestock and poultry, private sector led to eh. Maraming private sector dito, kaya maliit lang ang investment na binibigay niya nila dyaan. And then, nagkaproblemang bigla 'yung ASF. Dati namang walang ganyang kalaking problema ang livestock sector. Kaya ngayon, napuntang, ano, sa kanila. Masaya naman sila dati kasi marami dyan na mga private sector. Alam mo naman mga private sector, magaling naman sila how to manage themselves. Pero ngayon, hindi nila ma-manage talaga 'yung ASF. Kaya napunta sila sa, parang sa center of things, kasi ang hirap nitong ASF problem natin. Kaya ngayon, pinrioritize kasi natin 'yung cocoa lebeef, 'yung coconut farmers, tsaka 'yung rice farmers, kasi mas mahirap sila. Pero ngayon na may problema ang livestock sector. We will do a bill for the livestock sector para mabigyan naman sila ng tama nilang support. Oh, I will write a bill. It's just that I am studying, that's why I'm listening para alam ko kung ano gagawin ko. Kasi 'yung, 'yung rice sector, kaya natin nagawang maganda 'yung Rice Competitiveness Enhancement Fund. Meron talagang study ng ating competitiveness ng ating rice sector relative to Vietnam and Thailand. But the hog sector, walang study to miskian. Kaya I'm asking the Department of Finance and NEDA to make a study through PIDS. Para 'yung study na yon will help us determine ano ba problema nila, but hindi sila competitive. Kasi that would be the basis of the bill that we're going to write for them. Oh, yun lang, thank you very much.
Thank you, we support that, Senator Villar. I think Yusek Sombilio wants to add something. Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. We've saved the request. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
We received actually the request of Senator Villar. Unfortunately, Senator Villar, we tried to really do some search of literature, but wala po talagang updated na studies sa livestock, hogs, and poultry, no? So what we're really trying now to do is to really come, uh, um, do a quick assessment of the, of the industry. And we meant to write you about this, Madam Senator. If it has not reached you yet, we will be doing that and we will be helping you on your bill, just like how we help you with the rice tarification po. Thank you, Po.
I hope you will talk to the stakeholders, Yusek Sombilio. Because parang 'yung ibang ahensan, di yata sila kinaroza, Po.
No, we will do that, Mr. Senator, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor. Mr. President, my question, my next question, I'd like to move on from the issue of competitiveness and request for more specific proposals on that from our agencies. But we already have a law, the Agricultural Tarification Act or Republic Act 8178, which provides for the creation of the ASF or the Agricultural Competitiveness Enhancement Fund. That's, that's the one that's supposed to help, uh, so 'yung collections po natin o 'yung duties collected from importation of agriculture products. Uh, will go towards... Meri milistahan doon po sa batas, no? For the increased productivity of farmers by providing necessary credit, uh, for research and development of agricultural and fishery products of SUCs. Number three, for a comprehensive and attractive grant-in-aid program for agriculture, forestry, fisheries, and vet med education. Uh, is there a need to reexamine this law? May I ask the experts? Kasi ang naririnig natin in the first hearing and in this hearing is the need to invest in fighto-sanitary capital investments, diba? Para mabantayan po natin 'yung ating mga borders and, uh, tanggap po ng mga resource persons, na kulang nga tayo dyan. Uh, and secondly, how about support to the local, uh, industries, no? Direct, direct support, no? Although, palagay ko, sakop na rin yun nung number three, uh, ng 8178. So I throw that question to the body, Mr. President, because there is already a legal mandate for the DA to assist these industries. But perhaps, uh, to complete the picture, since ASF is a relatively new phenomenon, uh, is there a need to amend that law, Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. President, I want to comment on that because I wrote the amendment of the law in 2016. Uh, the law provides that eighty percent of the money will go to Land Bank and DBP to provide credit to the agricultural sector. Ten percent will go to, uh, credit, and twenty credit, and then the twenty percent will go to education, uh, CHED, so that they can provide scholarship to the children of farmers. So I guess we have to amend the law if you want to insert that in the law. Because the money is really, was really intended for DBP and Land Bank for credit, eighty percent and twenty percent for scholarship for your children of farmers. So if you want to include other things, we can amend the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Villar. How about the other resource persons, Mr. President?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair. Yes, Mr. San Diego.
Uh, for me, the law is still relevant, although you can find you need. Uh, and also, in answer to Yusek Sombilio, it's not modernization that the problem of agriculture in the Philippines is. It's the very high cost of production. Kami po sa poultry at sa ka sa hog, modernize na mga facilities namin eh. Ang problema po namin, the very high cost of local production. Kaya nga po, pinapatay tayo na imported, mas mura pa imported, na bibiyahe mula sa malalayong lugar, dadating sa Pilipinas, kalahati lang ang presyo ng ating mga...
Can I interrupt you? What can the government do to lower your cost of production? Yun ang sinasabi natin. That is the implication of our earlier question on competitiveness, Mr. San Diego.
Yeah, yes, Senator Angara. You know, itong mga bansa na sinasabi niyo, malilita pa sa nakie-export. There are these sectors highly subsidized. Tayo po walang subsidy, kahit ano dito sa Pilipinas. And Thailand may subsidy po. 'Yung mga nag-eexport po na 'yan, kaya nakapag-export na mura. Subsidized, highly subsidized 'yung kanilang mga sectors. Umukha sa America. 'Yung farm bill subsidizes the, not only the agriculture sector, but also the consumers. Yun ang sinasabi po nga namin. Sana po, 'yung mga tariff na nakukuha sa importasyon ng manok at baboy, ay parang sa ARCEP, ibigay dun sa mga sectors na naaapektuhan ng mga importation. Kasi wala pong laban eh, wala po kami laban dyan.
So you are saying we have to amend 8178? Because that is the law that is the, that is the law which earmarks the collections from tariffs? Yan ang sinasabi niyo, Mr. San Diego?
Yes, yes, yun po ang inaano namin na...
Sinabi na po ni Agricultural Chair, Senator Villar, she's willing to amend the law. So I suggest, let's try to move forward and present how we can... I think we should consult with the producers. Ano 'yung kailangan tulong, ano 'yung kailangan ayuda mula sa gobyerno? Ilagay po natin sa taas.
We will do so, I will submit the details for proposal. In fact, Senator Angara, kaya po napakatibay nung ating sugar sector. Kasi 'yung tariff po napupunta sa kanila directly, kaya sila, malaka sila. Kami po walang tulong-tulong na nakukuha. Sabi nga po namin sa gobyerno, hindi na namin kailangan 'yung financial help dahil medyo kami na mga private sector, nabanggit na nga ni Senator Villar. Uh, kaya naman namin eh. Ang kailangan po namin sa gobyerno, proteksyon. Hindi po 'yung tulong financial kundi protektahan kami against this very cheap imports.
Senator Angara.
Yeah, hi, Senator. Go ahead, go ahead.
Senator President and Senator Angara. Uh, mas, mas mabuti siguro, uh, i-specific kung saan ilalagay 'yung budget. Takot na kami sa DA eh, kasi ngayon hindi na kami nagattend ng consultation ng DA dahil tatakot na kami dun sa mga nangyari na series, uh, itong-nangyari dito sa mga meeting, no? La, uh, pina-approved nila, ay, pinalower 'yung presyo. Tapos, nagkaroon sila ng meeting na parang to comply 'yung ginagawa nila. So, uh, so sana itong mga, mga budget dito dapat i-specific. Uh, para at least eh, hindi 'yung Sekretary ng DA... Ngayon, 'yung Sekretary ng DA bibili ng two thousand five hundred na freezer para sa importer worth forty-five million. Imagine imingin namin one year ago, 'yung port of entry i-test lang 'yung itong ASF. Uh, para at least eh, masigurado ang ating mga livestock hindi matamaan. Itong last, for example, last year, two hundred fifty million kilos ang pumasok. Ang isang, isang container is twenty-five, uh, thousand kilos, no? So kung i-test natin 'yan, is ten thousand testing lang. Sa forty-five, uh, four thousand five per test, parang forty-five million ang kailangan lang natin. Pero hindi nila ginagawa. Kaya maski paanong, paanong kumbinsi na mag-long ang mga hog raiser? Takot, kasi 'yung borders natin, hindi, hindi na bantayan. 'Yung nangyari sa resal na tinamaan ng ASF, 'yung resal, eh, 'yung mga restaurant and 'yung mga hotel, five-star hotel, maliwaan la ba kayo nakukuha 'yun ng, uh, illegal meat? Uh, like Manila Hotel, mga Solier, di biniba sila ng illegal meat? And dadali 'yung, 'yung concessioner, nagdadaan 'yung mga basura dun sa mga restaurant niya, uh, hotel niya, di na la sa resal. So, kaya ang sinasabi namin, 'yung mga 'yan, uh, hindi, ano, hindi galing sa illegal meat 'yan. So, 'yung borders natin, hindi nila masapi. Uh, kung eto ba na-test ng ASF, up to now, wala ano, 'yung bird flu rin, bakit pumasok ito last time? Wala kasi tayong testing, yun ang malaking problema natin. Yeah, Mr. President and Senator Angara. Sana 'yung, 'yung gagawin natin is specific, like rice tarification, kung saan pupunta 'yung pondok. Para at least eh, hindi na 'yung DA Sekretary na maggadecide kung saan pupunta 'yung pondok.
Yeah, okay, that's a good suggestion. I think that dun din patungo ko ang ating chairperson, si Senator Sintiak. Uh, so, uh, how about the proposal, Your Honor, Mr. President? To, for the government to also import para...
What do you say to this suggestion, Senator Angara? Na diretsyo na raw, 'yung mga, 'yung funding or 'yung mga proposal idiretsyo.
I think that's a good, I think it's a good, that's a good suggestion, Mr. President. We, we really, para hindi kung saan-saan madala and over different administrations, hindi magbago 'yung focus, Mr. President.
Kasi habang nagkikwento si Kasendong, Senator Laxson and I could not help but remember the story of the policeman. 'Yung nagdadasal sa kiyapong babae, mihingi na isang daan sa Pangeraon. Naririnig siya ng pulis, rinig siya ng singkwenta, singkwenta lang pera ng pulis eh. Sabi nung babae, Diyos ko po, salamat po sa pera. Pero sa susunod ko, buong niya na padadaan eh sa pulis. Joke lang yun, actually, pero...
I guess not, because it was Senator Laxson who made the joke, Mr. President, so it's okay.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, just leave it aside.
Thank you, Mr. President. Eh, 'yung, kasi sa tanong ni Senator Rekto last week, sabi niya, ano 'yung garantya na binabangan natin 'yung tariff, pero magbebenta ng mababang presyo itong mga importers natin. There's no guarantee. Uh, so how do we incentivize them to do that? And one, uh, one Congresswoman, si very smart economist, is si Representative Kimbo, is suggesting the government temporarily also import para may competition 'yung, uh, 'yung local, 'yung mga importers, para mapilitan silang ibaba 'yung kanilang presyo. What do you think of that suggestion?
Who were you asking?
I just the body in general, Mr. President.
Yeah, Senator Angara, of course, uh...
Yes, go ahead, Kasendong.
Kung titignan natin 'yung, ano eh, 'yung other countries, paano magsubsidize sa kanila na... Kasi si, ano eh, Secretary Carr, ang tinignan niya 'yung FAO record na ang presyo is three dollars and something, no, three dollars and fifty cents. Pero lahat ng pumasok dito, sinek namin dun sa costo, up to itong March arrival, ang presyo is one dollar and seventy, no? Ganun kalayo 'yung, 'yung presyo. And I think 'yung decision to lower the tariff, dapat hindi ginawa yun dahil mawawala 'yung koleksyon pa rin natin, no? Mawawala 'yung suporta na koleksyon para sa atin, sa atin na gobyerno. And 'yung transfer ng presyo, kung titignan natin 'yung importer with forty percent, hundred forty pesos lang based on 'yung presyo na yon. So, uh, ibababa...
Just to, just to summarize what you said, Kasendong. What you're saying is bumibili po sila na mura, binebenta ng mahal? That's what you're saying? Okay.
Yes, oo. So, so dapat kung talagang, uh, gusto silang tumulong, no? Gusto silang tumulong sa atin na consumer. Dapat ibenta ito ng one eighty-five, pero paano wala tayong makitang one eighty-five dyan? At forty percent tariff, binenta rin nila ng three hundred fifty, three hundred sixty sa supermarket. So, uh, hindi, hindi rin na-transfer sa consumer.
Yeah, why is that the case? Uh, can we ask NEDA and the DA? Why is that the case? Because then the policy is not working, diba? Kasi the intention according to Secretary Chu is to reduce the very high inflation and pass on, pass it, pass on the benefit to the consumers. But apparently, there's, there's no benefit based on the current prices.
Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Chair, can you, can I be heard?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, okay. Uh, that's why, that's why Secretary Carr also mentioned about the situation that we had during the rice, the, before the RTL was passed. At that time, before the RTL was passed, we were also seeing in the market very high prices. But when it got passed, you know, we started, you know, getting some of the lower prices. Ang sinasabi niya, wala na, hindi na po natin nakikita 'yung, uh, 'yung tiered market.
Yusek, I want to cut a long story short, to cut a long story short. When you allowed, when we allowed free importation, ano nangyari? Diba bumaba ang presyo?
Oo, walang cartel. Bumaba po ang presyo, but it really took some time.
So how do we assure, my question now, I want to cut this short. Uh, how do we assure the prices will, the price benefit that we intended will be assured to our consumers?
Mr. Chair.
Kaya nga po, kagaya din po noong, noong sa rice po, the market will find its equilibrium. After we already be, we will be seeing also more imports at lower prices.
You're talking about a perfectly competitive market, Yusek Sombilio? Is this a perfectly competitive market given that it's only an agency that gives quotas, select quotas which are being fought over? Does that fit the definition of a competitive market?
No, it doesn't.
Yung maghiyakan na mga farmers.
Mr. Chair. Hindi po competitive market 'yan, Yusek Sombilio. So I don't know if your argument as to finding the correct equilibrium is valid. That's, that's, I'd like to put it out there, no?
We'll ask you to wrap it up, because...
Yeah, yun na lang po, yun na lang po sa akin, Mr. President. I think, I think I'd like to leave that issue for our, ano? We're saying, the, the, our top economists, Mr. President, are saying that the market will find its own level. But that assumes a competitive market. This is not a competitive market because we sell the quotas. We, or at least we, we regulate the quotas. So hindi competitive market ito. It's not open to everybody, it's in fact, uh, very restricted, Mr. President. Yun lang, thank you, thank you, Your Honors.
I'm very sorry to the other resource persons who wish to have, to be recognized, no? But you see, you have no problems because you're virtually present. Uh, in our case, we have to close the Senate at five o'clock and it's already four thirty-seven, we have to accommodate one more senator. So please bear with us. Unless you're here, if you want to be here, I will wait until ten o'clock. For those who wish to make, uh, no, make representations. Anyway, thank you very much, Senator Angara. And the rest, those who would like to give their comments, you can of course submit it to the committee of the whole, if we cannot accommodate it now. We now recognize Senator Grace Po. Senator Po, you have ten minutes.
Thank you.